If you could please have a seat. Thank you. It's something we are live and we didn't switch the light.
Okay, I'm gonna figure out how to take my mask off. And I'm gonna go ahead and call the January Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Thanks everyone for attending. First of our new year 2020 and hopefully it will be better than last year with all of the pandemic issues that have caused quite a bit of disruption. We start off the new year with a number of challenges facing NRHA. We should also see these challenges as opportunities for NRHA to successfully meet those challenges. We as a board need to assure the families that we serve that we hold NRHA as Executive Director. And it's the leadership team to provide the highest level of service. When we fall short, we need to know why. No excuses, no passing the buck, we need to own it. We also need to know what solutions go short and long term that the Executive Director and his team will implement to address these challenges. I'm sure Ron will provide further details about this and other matters during his remarks. We also have some related items today to address in closed session. Also, Joe Dillard notified me on December 16th that he would be resigning from the board effective December 31st. During the first of our regular meeting, I will honor Joe for his years of service to NRHA and its residents. We all knew that because of his new position in Richmond, there would be some challenges for Joe to continue his service as Commissioner on the NRHA board. I'd like to highlight and honor Joe's commitment and service to NRHA later in this meeting. As for a replacement for the open Commissioner's seat, City Council will be meeting on March 8th to discuss boards and commission vacancies. Ron and I have been contacted by the City Clerk's office for recommendations. And the deadline to submit an application to the Clerk's office is February 8th. I now invite your comments, if any, on the minutes from the November 18th and December 9th board meeting. We will take them in order, so any comments on November 18th minutes? Next are on page three.
I make the motion that we accept them as presented.
A second? Ms. Card.
Mr. Albert.
Aye.
Mr. Gresham.
Aye.
Ms. Arrington. Mr. Benassi.
Aye.
Mr. Missatch.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Chair, for, uh, for the record, that meeting, uh, one of these meetings I wasn't present for. And that's why I, I didn't want to, uh, be the voice that initiated the vote. But I'm, I'm, if that was the meeting, I am through to accept or to a full on approval, right?
I think you missed the, the next one.
The next one?
Yeah, the nine, December 9th one, you.
Yeah, that's the one I missed. So I just wanted to be sure, I couldn't offer the, uh, motion, uh, where I could vote to accept it.
Correct.
I'll do it this time.
Correct.
All right, and let's look at the December 9th Board of Commissioners meeting. And have a motion.
Uh, again, I make a motion that we accept them as written.
Second? Uh, a second?
A, a second.
Thank you. Ms. Card.
Mr. Albert.
Aye.
Mr. Gresham.
Aye.
Ms. Arrington and Mr. Benassi.
Abstain, I did not attend.
Mr. Missatch.
Aye.
Okay. Um, we have fixed the, um, technical issues, so we are broadcasting this meeting live on a virtual platform. Uh, all information shared today is available online in the Board of Commissioners section at NRHA.us. We will allow for public comment, uh, and virtual participants have the opportunity to raise their hands to comment. Attendees may also use the chat feature to make their comment as well. And I will, uh, share these prompt instructions closer to that time. Uh, all right, uh, Mr. Jackson?
Okay.
Comments?
Good morning Commissioners and, and our guests that we have with us today. I have a couple of items I'd like to comment on and toward the end there, I wanted to bring up some new items that I wanted to address people before. There's a couple of follow-up items, if, if you recall it, our November 18th meeting, we had a presentation by USI People First in regards to their two-year annual report.
Ron, can you speak up a little for them?
Yeah. Uh, we had a, in, excuse me, the November, at the November 18th board meeting, we had a presentation by USI People First in regards to their two-year annual report, and there were a number of statistics and things that they had presented. Uh, that information that was presented created a number of, uh, questions by our board that they didn't feel that was satisfactorily answered. Uh, it was suggested that at the, uh, after the end of that meeting, that the board, the board members who had questions, that we submit those questions and write them to USI People First. At the November, at the December board meeting, they did supply their responses. But it just so happened those responses created more questions. So I was supposed to follow up with Commissioner Purrier in terms of trying to set up a meeting to resolve some of the outstanding questions that the board members had. Uh, I wasn't successful in doing that, however, the, I guess, the, uh, for the related parties, uh, in this matter, uh, from USI and People First, as well as Commissioner Purrier, will be a part of the Board of Commissioners HO Housing Choice Voucher Committee meeting next, I think it's next week. And hopefully in that setting, we'll be able to resolve any outstanding questions.
Which committee meeting is this?
That was the Housing Choice, uh, uh, Board of Commissioners Housing Choice Voucher Committee meeting. And I think there are members from USI or, uh, People First that are at that meeting, so we hope to bring that up to be able to resolve any questions from that meeting.
Uh-huh.
Yes.
Uh, only one Commissioner today attend because two cannot, can two? How many Commissioners can attend that meeting?
I think because it is a public meeting, I think there's a three.
As many.
There are three that attend, so it is a public meeting.
As many as you wish.
Yes.
Okay, I want.
Okay, the second follow-up item I wanted to, uh, bring to you, uh, at our last meeting, I think at our previous meeting in November, Raytron, White, TNC President for Granite Village, did address the board a number of items, uh, that he felt that our staff needed to, needed to address. Uh, at the December meeting, uh, there was a, a number of other issues that Mr., Mr. White brought before the board. Uh, Don and I felt that it was probably best if we sat down with Raytron to go over his top five items. We did that last Friday that we met with him. Uh, in your, and what I'm, what I'm reading from, I think it's on page?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, that I sort of bullet pointed the item that, that we had sort of discussed, the top five items. And, uh, our, the five, okay, residents need to be better informed about submitted events. Uh, I'm just gonna briefly go over, uh, meeting staff positions to bridge NRHA to residents, which I think I did mention that Kim, our Chief of Community Engagement, is actually working on that. We have a position that we're, that's going through the approval process, it's called the Community Relations Manager.
Ron, can you speak up, please?
Okay. The, uh, that we are working on a, a position that Raytron had suggested, it's called a Community Relations Manager. That's sort of in the, in the, it's in the approval process. Uh, another item that Raytron mentioned was better customer service with, uh, for residents. He also, uh, another item was that us, the leadership, taking care of NRHA employees, doing a better job of that, of supporting them, providing more resources to our employees. And the last thing he talked about was the development, development apartment, apprenticeship program, working, uh, working with our residents, that there may be opportunities for them, or employment opportunities, going through that, going through a training program, that there be opportunities for them to actually be employed by NRHA. We thought those were all very good ideas, and actually, these ideas, or it's not, they're just, they're, I would, I would say they're not just relegated to Granite Village, but these are ideas that I think could be applied throughout all of our community. So I am meeting with staff, uh, when I, later on, one of the items that I'll talk about is our strategic planning process. These are some really good ideas that we need to start thinking about. When we start thinking about NRHA moving from the old way of doing business to the new way of doing business, because we understand we can't continue doing business the way that we've always done business and get different results. All right. Next three items I want to talk about are COVID and how it's impacted our current operations. First of all, I'd like to, uh, thank Richard Barter, our HR Director, for really keeping on top of how COVID has impacted us recently in terms of numbers and, uh, uh, doing the tracing and exposure and numbers, because that's really been helpful for us to really get a gauge on how this current surge of COVID has impacted our operations. And unfortunately, it has, but since I've started, we've been dealing with COVID in certain magnitude. And unfortunately, this last wave with the Omicron variant has really impacted our operations, primarily in the housing division. And again, unfortunately, sort of a confluence of factors in the sense that we were already dealing with staff shortages as it was, and then we have the Omicron variant that comes along, and it's really impacted our operations. For example, uh, just to give, put it in context, uh, as of January the 12th in Virginia, the positivity rate was nearly 36%. Uh, we weren't able to get like cumulative data, but Richard estimates that our numbers cumulatively since the onset of the Omicron variant, that it's close to that percentage of people that have been impacted in our, uh, in our agency. Uh, currently, we have, uh, we have 12 reported positive cases, and there have been 20 cases of possible exposure. So, uh, hopefully, we're going through the worst of it. From some of the things I've been reading, the, uh, projections are that in the next two weeks, we're gonna see us start seeing a sharp decline that just, we've sort of plateaued. That's what we're hoping. And then because of the transmissibility of this particular variant, that we'll start seeing, uh, a decline hopefully within the next, uh, couple of weeks. And that's how we've been trying to keep staff encouraged in that, hey, we don't see this as being a long-term battle with this. We re-implemented some of our mitigation strategies to try to address it, you know, like with the social distancing and masks and things like that, keeping up with the current CDC guidelines. Uh, but just try to keep the morale up and things like this, say, hey, we need to maybe take a few steps back and go back to some of the things that we're doing in the initial part of the pandemic. But we see that, you know, over the next couple of weeks, or maybe a month, at the, at the longest, the things will start to get back to, if you wanna call it normal, because we'll probably to some degree still be dealing with it, but we can get back to, you know, to where we were before this, this onset of the Omicron variant.
Ron.
Yes.
Uh, what about the new strain that's come out?
There's another, there's another one.
Yes, a new one just came out.
Uh, well, the only thing I heard is about that one, is that it may not be as transmissible. I don't know anything else.
Yeah, but it is more variant, virulent, you know.
That's what they're coming from.
But I don't, yeah, I have not, that's more than most words. Yeah, I've heard of, you know, a combination of, uh, COVID and flu, and I mean, there's, I don't, but we've, we're having to deal with what we, what we can now. Like I said, if, you know, when we start doing, even like talking about business operations and trying to conduct business, we have no idea if it's something we're gonna have to contend with for a long time, so that's really, and I'm gonna get to it a little later, it's really, really no excuse for us to sort of sit back and say that, you know, it's gonna continue to, continue to impact our operations, we're just gonna have to figure out a way with the balance of trying to keep people safe, but, you know, people are gonna still have, uh, needs and services that they require. And we're gonna have to figure out a way to do that and be proactive in what we do under this cloud of a pandemic. Until we get to the point of, you know, wherever it's an end, it becomes an end, and they got to determine where it sort of levels off. But we just, we still gotta continue to figure out ways to do what we do. Yeah.
When they do, uh, when, uh, the, um, services go home and the workers have to work from home, does that, 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 that don't slow down, uh, the business of everything? Or do, it's kind of go about the same?
It, it shouldn't, because we went through this initially, where we sort of worked through the whole thing with teleworking, because we knew that there was a loss in productivity, because we really weren't equipped to be able to have people telework when people were, you know, when we're under a state of emergency, we had to send, we had to close off to send folks home, but we had, we took that opportunity to make sure that people had the proper equipment. With call, IT staff were able to do that, be able to have access to files. We implemented the telework policy, and one of the things we did through that was make sure that folks, for example, there was more office-oriented paperwork, that they had the ability to, like, uh, get those, uh, get those documents through electronic format. So we, we have taken steps to be able to minimize any, I would say, any, any drawbacks in our work performance, even though folks had to work for most.
But, you know, just from, from my world, um, while the, uh, core activities of any operation is ongoing.
Yes.
The, the tertiary, uh, conversations that may be of the creative type, a lot of that is being lost because you're dealing electronically.
Yes.
So, so, you know, it, again, just from my world, we're able to keep business operations going.
Right.
But a lot of things have sloughed off.
Right.
Just by necessity, because you don't have those coffee break type conversations.
You know, and those are, those are important, I think those are the things, you know, when I'm thinking about, you know, just being able to go out and go out to the office, go out and, or even how it's impacted, you know, the, our, our housing division, because there's, there's a lot, you know, there's a lot of face-to-face. Yeah. Things that, that are really part of the whole.
Yeah.
Customer service experience that we haven't been able to have. Uh, and so, yeah, that, that's, uh, that's the part that's really dropped off. Okay. Uh, so that's it for the, the COVID. Uh, the next item I wanted to bring your attention is the, uh, uh, situation that we had at, at Young's Terrace, the maintenance, uh, I call it. I titled it owning up to our maintenance failure at Young's Terrace. And I didn't, uh, and that was highlighted on Wavy News, uh, last week. And I certainly understand the board's frustration, as well as the public's frustration, residents frustration at the, our leadership team in having that situation highlighted like it was, but, you know, we can't, there are no excuses. I'm not here to put forward any excuses, the only thing that I can say that we have to do a better job of what, what, of what we've done and the way we've done business in the past, uh, we need, uh, to have short-term solutions when we have situations like that. Uh, we all understand, especially amongst the staff, that there's probably, there may be more situations out there like that. Uh, like I said, that we're not offering any excuses, uh, with the shortages of, that we've had with staff, and then the, like I said, with the, the surge of this Omicron variant. But it, it still goes a little deeper than that, it actually goes a little deeper in terms of the work process, the customer service. There's a lot of things that, that really need to, to be addressed in this particular situation, that we need to take a, a really good look at. Uh, I would say in terms of the short term, uh, we're working with procurement to develop a pool of contractors to actually, to actually go out, in addition to our maintenance staff, to actually go out and, and try to address the problems that are there. We're combing through our work orders to make sure nothing is falling through the cracks, uh, possibly like this situation, are there other folks out there? You know, I've, I've actually had folks call me and say, hey, you know, I, you know, I put in a work order, it's been a while, no one's responded. They could have just as easily gone to Wavy TV to, but it's happened, move it more often. Uh, then I feel comfortable whether that, we have to really think about how we conduct business. So, like I said, the short term is to bring in more contractors, we're looking up, you know, Section Three opportunities, whatever contractor that we could get to sort of deploy throughout our communities to help address these kind of situations. We're dealing with buildings that are 60 years old, that, that's one problem, but that's still no excuse to not be attentive to our residents. Another short, the midterm solution is, and I'm gonna talk about it later, when it comes to our strategic planning process, we need to look at all of our business operations, we need to build stone on turn when it comes to see how we do business. Um, the long-term solution is that, like I started off saying, we're dealing with 60-year-old buildings, what is the modernization, uh, renovation, demolition is gonna look like? I mean, I'm talking about maybe two, three years beyond, that's both of the long-term solutions that we really need to be able to address. But I can assure you, we are working on the immediate short-term solution, that is, we're bringing in more resources, more contractors to help our staff to be able to, to respond in a more proactive way to address some of these issues that we know that this, uh, Pharrell and her family are probably experiencing. Like I said, I know the staff is frustrated, Donna's done a really good job in trying to reach out and stay in contact with the family. I've reached out to the family just to make sure that, you know, that there, that the work that we said that needed to be done is actually, uh, being done. Uh, we did, we were able to find the Pharrell and her family another, uh, another unit in a, in another community, that was based upon, uh, her, but, you know, being a gunshot system at the off, at the off-site, and since it happened, I think it was about a meeting before, and so we were actually able to find her new site. But still, there's a sense of urgency to make, to rectify those situations, those maintenance situations that are out there.
Ron.
Yes.
Um, the maintenance and their orders that they have, they call them into the main office, but don't the main office have a responsibility to, if, if an order stays there too long, they, they supposed to question why this happened then?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, that this, the, the current system, and this is sort of my next, my next topic that I'm gonna talk about, uh, that the TAG report, the organizational assessment pretty much highlighted, and I, and I titled it sort of in a metaphorical way. I said that we've become prisoners of our past. And basically, we have to operate with the systems, no matter how antiquated they are, we are, we have to work with those systems. You know, systems are not really modern-day systems to be able to work with by an excellent level of customer service. I mean, we should be at the point of where residents, we should be at the point where residents can go online. I mean, if we, they go online to make rent payments, they should be able to go online and, and submit work orders. That way, things aren't lost through cracks, there's not a phone call, somebody writes something on a slip and it gets lost. Yeah.
All right, so, so are you saying that you think the question that Rose just asked you, that was a system failure?
No, what I'm saying is that she was, she was asking about the phone, the phone, that we're still, folks are still calling in, and.
No, 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 of course she was making one, that, that, a maintenance call.
Yes.
If those procedures were followed, there was opportunity for somebody to say, this has not been done.
Yeah, there was.
I don't think she, I don't think she was questioning the system. She was saying, the management, the office management.
Yeah.
Should have known.
Yeah.
That this thing is too long, am I right, Rose?
Yes.
Yeah, they should have.
The man, the manager.
So, so I don't think that's a system failure, I think that's leadership.
Yeah, that, that, I, I would say that that's, that's part, that's part of it too. But I think that the system that we have in place, because like I mentioned before, I've heard it, I've heard it before where things are, things fall through the cracks. And it, it is leadership, I, I agree, it is, it is leadership. But I think that there's ways for us to improve our response to situations like that. So, yeah, it's almost like if we, it should, it should have been followed up on regardless of the system, I agree. Regardless of the system that's in place, there was a failure somewhere along the line at that point where the call, where the person called in, there was something written down, and it was somewhere along the line that got lost. So that, that's on, that's on, you know, when I say owning that, that's, we need to own it. Uh, I mean, there's no excuse, but what I was talking about is that we would, we should look at better ways of doing, of doing business.
I, I hate to, you know.
I'm not making excuses.
Hmm?
I'm not making.
Yeah, I hate, I hate to, uh, you know, I know this is a tough time for, uh, these kind of questions, I, I really do. But, Ron, I, I gotta tell you, I hear you, and I'm hearing what you're saying, it just seems like you're doing everything you can to not say somebody failed on this, and, and there's no.
I, I, I said we own it, we have.
Can you say we?
I said we, I said I, just, did I not say?
I heard you, I heard you.
That the board is frustrated, I didn't say that. I said, in the beginning, I said the board is frustrated with me.
I don't wanna, I don't miss you about it, I'm just simply making my comments about what, what I hear.
Well, this is my time, you have your, you have the opportunity to.
Okay, all right, I'll be quiet.
Uh, so anyway, yes, it was a failure on our part. What I'm saying is, which I said it leads into what I'm gonna say, that we've become prisoners of, of our way of, of, of old way of doing business. It's, it is, it was highlighted by the TAG report, and I'm not making excuses, but what I'm saying is that the status quo is not gonna work. That's basically what I'm saying. We gotta figure out new ways to do things. We don't, we don't have a customer service piece of servicing work board. How can we follow up the residents to figure out what we did that was satisfactory? We don't have that. Those are the things that I'm talking about, that we need to have in place. We have no standards in terms of customer service. So what I'm saying is that we need to get away from the old way of doing business, there's faults around us. I have, I, I bear it, but the reason why we did the organizational assessment is because I understood that we can't do business the way that we're doing it. That's the bottom line, so.
Hey, Ron.
Yeah.
This is Ken Benassi. I clearly agree that TAG pointed this out, and you are spot-on, that we need a process change and it has to do with automation. And we have to have an automated system where you, you and Donna Mills can look up at any one time and see, okay, we got three, uh, uh, call orders that haven't been responded to in four weeks.
Right.
When are we going to implement this technology? Is it in the budget? And do you have a plan to implement that?
Yeah. Yeah, what, my, my last bullet, what I was talking about today was, first of all, I said we're prisoners of our past, which the TAG report talked about. Everybody understands that we. Everybody understands that we need to change the way we do business. No one, no one, uh, trying to hold up the status quo. That's why we got the report down. We know that we need to change the way we do business. Uh, I wanted to get, just to give you a sense of some of the things that we're talking about when I talk about the strategic plan process. Where's the mouse? This is just a preview. We had, uh, we, uh, engaged, uh, uh, as part of the process, we engaged Great Path Management. They've done a number of, uh, uh, worked with a number of organizations, local organizations, private, public organizations to come up with a strategic plan. We were to have a sort of our kickoff meeting with the strategic leadership team, uh, Tuesday, but because of the issues we're dealing with COVID, we couldn't, we're actually going to have that meeting next Tuesday. But I wanted to give the board a preview, like Ken had talked about, what, what are the next steps in terms of, hey, we have the TAG assessed, we know where the issues are, what are going to be the next steps? We can continue talking about the way things have been, but we need to pass forward in order to come, in order to, to take the, the next steps. And just to, I said, just to give you a preview, these are some of the things that we're going to be looking at in terms of the strategic plan. Uh, this is really the, the, sort of the crux of it is right here. Goal, a misstrategic plan based on high-level guidance, which is with, from the board, uh, staff creation of objective action step measures and timing. Why are we having it? A strategic plan is important to an organization because it provides a sense of direction and outlines measurable goals. One of the things I could say, we don't have a set of goals. There's a set of wants and hears and why are we doing this and that? One of the things I could say, you have a whole bunch of goals, you really don't have any goals. And I, it, it brings to mind a story, whether it's anecdote or not, where you guys have heard of Warren Buffett, the investor, he had a conversation with his pilot, his pilot was trying to come up with, it is sort of his goals, his top goal. Warren Buffett said, write down twenty-five goals that you have for yourself that you want to accomplish. So the pilot wrote down the twenty-five goals. Uh, Warren Buffett said, I want you to circle your top five goals. So after some time, he circled his top five goals. So he said, okay, good. This is what Warren Buffett, Buffett's response was. Then Warren Buffett went to the pilot and said, what are you going to do about the other twenty? Pilot responded, well, when I have time, I'm going to work on them a little bit here or there. He said, no, you can't do that. Not until you accomplish your top five goals can you start working on the others. I feel like we're working on five, twenty-five. There is no strategic plan that we have in place from the board, working with our staff to say, these are the most important things. That's where we need to get to. And why now? After some years of reaction mode, we need to become more practiced, clarify focus, build off of organization assessment, which is a tactical. So, like I said, this is just an overview, some of the most important things you need to be aware of. We're actually going to start next week. Staff is going to start accumulating the data and things like that to be able to, uh, sort of give you all the existing conditions of where we are in terms of our business. The next thing, which I feel is the most important part because, you know, a lot of the things that we've done recently, I don't know, you know, if you, I would say we've engaged to sort of the temperature of the public perception of NRHA. I don't know where it is at this point, given how much we've been out in the, you know, out in the public, the publicity. But I think the important part of this is that there are going to be interviews, focus groups, surveys, not only must our staff and residents, but some of the thought leaders in our community, we need to know what they think of what we are doing. Now, to me, that's going to be an important step in terms of how to address and remedy the public perception that we have. We've got a sort of, we're at the point now where we, there's really nothing to hide. There's nothing to hide from me, the leadership from the board, especially at this point. So that's going to be a very important step in the strategic planning process in terms of actual, the board actually having to get all this information and decide, just to staff help on, what are the top ten, just for like, what are the top ten items that we as an agency should be concentrating on? Remember, we can't concentrate on all those, those other twenty. We need to concentrate on the top ones that we circled and said that we need to be working. So that's where the board comes to say, as an agency, these are the things that we need to work on. And not only that, we need to have timetables and measures and we need to have, in our monthly reports, need to show how far we're progressing with what the board says are our priorities. So, and then after that, then the, you know, the documentation of the actual report, another I, another part of this is that it co, sort of coincides with the budget process. So what that means is what's identified in the strategic plan that we provide the resources. Like Ken had mentioned, okay, there's IT, you know, when we start talking about revamping our work order system, there's going to take money to do that. Because this coincides with the budget process, when you all, when you presented with the, with the budget, you can say, okay, we can devote X amount of money to upgrade our work orders to make sure that, you know, we have real-time data of where we are with work orders, timing, then units turn, when an emergency work order starts. So that's an important, that's going to be an important, uh, piece of this as well. Uh, and then the last thing, one of the questions to, the question is that what are the most important issues or questions to address and resolve over the next three years? So that's what we want to be able to answer when we go through this process. So I just wanted to give you a preview. Uh, we're going to, the executive team is going to, we're going to do a lot more in-depth information and I'll keep you abreast of where we are. And once we sort of solidify the dates in terms of engaging the board, that, you know, I'll let you know so you can have it on your calendar. I'll just keep you up to date because like I said, when we start trying to reach out to the public to get their comments, that's going to be, I think that's going to be an important piece of it and you all need to be aware that that's what we're, that's what we're doing when we start trying to give a tumble, take an examination of our, of our operations as well as our staff to see that what I'm doing, what our staff is doing, are there ways to improve in what we do? And that's really the only way we can change our image. All right. Boy, that's all I had.
Any comments for the director? Again.
Wait a minute, wait. I apologize.
Not yet, no. Public comment comes a little later.
Yes, sir. Sorry, I couldn't hear you at all.
Yeah, that, with, with, Ron, you, you are a very quiet man. So I just, Jen, next time can we have a, a microphone?
Oh, I'm, there's still, still hard here.
Yeah.
Fair.
It's a good next go around.
We'll get a microphone.
Yeah, so that'll take care of everyone in the room.
Okay.
It's good to be quiet sometimes. Okay, Commissioner's remarks, anyone? Okay, then let's move on to the development, which is on page thirty, which shows what has, has happened. Um, I'll give you a minute to look at those. Are there any questions about acquisitions, dispositions, all of that stuff? Uh, if not, then let's go ahead and take a look at page thirty-two and I'll ask Ms. Mills to, um, take over.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, great. Um, so this morning you have in front of you a resolution to authorize a change order to our carbon monoxide detector installation contract. Initially back in August, uh, we awarded this contract to Plusix Installation Incorporated, and this was to install carbon monoxide detectors in our communities that have gas-powered appliances. The initial award was for ninety-nine thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. Uh, after that award period, we learned that HUD was requiring these detectors to also go into any apartment unit that had, uh, a gas boiler in the building, uh, which included our mid-rises, which had not been initially included in our RFP for this work. So we added the mid-rises at a total of three hundred and seventy-three units, which brought the contract to an additional forty-six thousand, bringing in the total to a hundred and forty-five thousand eight seventy-one. Um, that was below the threshold, so we made that adjustment. And then shortly thereafter, we realized that there was a miscalculation for the units needed in Oakley Forest. Uh, the initial request had eighty-six was ju, which was just a building number instead of the actual unit number of four, four, excuse me, five hundred. And so the difference from that is four fourteen, which had to be added to the contract as well, and that was estimated at fifty-one thousand six eighty-two. So as a result of that, the total change order put us over the threshold, so we are coming to you to ask for approval to award this contract in the amount of one hundred and ninety-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty cents. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Um, Donna, I thought the government said they were going to do that for free. Give you free, uh, I thought the government was going to give free, um, detectors.
No, ma'am. We did receive funding from HUD through the capital fund program. We actually received a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for this specific project. So that's the funding that we're using to do this work. It's a little bit over what that amount we received, so we will use our other capital fund to do this.
Okay, other questions? I mean, I think public comment later, thank you. One of the things that's important that we get this done, the carbon monoxide ones, so, uh, any other comments? Uh, if not, uh, accept a motion.
So moved.
A, a second?
Second.
Ms. Collins?
Mr. Albert?
Aye.
Mr. Gresham?
Aye.
Ms. Harrington? Uh, Mr. Benassi?
Aye.
Mr. Musachio?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mills? And, uh, also the issues of community engagement are all in your packet as well. Starting on page thirty-three are the contract activities reports. There's no questions on that. I think we'll go ahead and move to the new business, which is on page thirty-eight. And it's a resolution, Mr. Jackson?
Finance and administrative activities, I have a minute in case there are questions.
I, I, I tell you.
Oh, okay.
I haven't heard any, so.
Okay. All right.
But again, if there's, if it comes up later, do it.
Okay, uh, the next item is just a resolution, um, giving the deputies or deputy direct, executive directors, or they're designated, uh, authority to be able to, uh, sign deeds or trans, uh, signing deed declarations of trust, transfer, or cumber property. That was something that was, uh, bested an executive director, but because of our organizational change and in order for us to continue to con, uh, conduct, conduct business, uh, in a timely manner, this is a resolution that's asking that the deputies also have the, the power to be able to, to sign deeds and cumber declarations of trust. Uh, or, you know, they have the ability to designate someone, so we could continue on with that line of business without any interruption.
Okay, this, what it looks like to be basically, we changed some names, so we got with these names in here. Okay? Uh, comments, questions? All right, and I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Ms. Collins?
Mr. Albert?
Aye.
Mr. Gresham?
Aye.
Ms. Harrington?
Aye.
Mr. Benassi?
Aye.
Mr. Musachio?
Okay, and then we have, the next one is resolutions for Mr. Diller.
It should be res.
And, uh, I'll go ahead and do that. Again, uh, Joe accepted a position in Richmond and, and we knew it's going to be difficult for him to come back and forth, but, uh, so he, uh, resigned effective, uh, December thirty-first, but I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Whereas Joe W. Diller Jr. has served as a member of the Board of Commissioners, the Board of the Norfolk Redevelopment Housing Authority since November twenty seventeen. Whereas throughout his tenure, tenure on the Board, Joe has demonstrated a strong commitment to the Authority's mission of providing decent, safe, affordable housing as well as related essential services for the citizens of Norfolk. Whereas Joe has served as an advocate for the residents of NRHA communities and a passionate voice for the equitable treatment of such residents regardless of race, age, or economic circumstance. And whereas Joe's transportation expertise developed through his association with Hampton Roads Transit has brought valuable insight to the Board and was instrumental in assisting the Board to better recognize and address the critical need to provide access to transportation for all NRHA residents. And whereas Joe has consistently carried out his responsibilities as Commissioner with dedication, perseverance, and pragmatism, always serving as the voice of reason and approaching every issue with integrity and an open mind, now therefore being resolved that we, the Commissioners of the Authority, do hereby take this opportunity to express our sincere appreciation for Joe's service to the Authority and his many contributions to the Board. Being further resolved that the Chairman of the Board of the Commissioners of the Authority is hereby directed to provide a copy of this resolution to Joe W. Diller Jr. and cause a copy of said resolution to be placed on record in the Office of the Authority. And I hope this is adopted this thirteenth day of January twenty twenty-two. And just to give you a sense of what we'll be providing Joe, uh, as long as well as, uh, his photo from out front. So, uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Ms. Collins?
Mr. Albert?
Aye.
Mr. Gresham?
Aye.
Ms. Harrington?
Aye.
Mr. Benassi?
Aye.
Mr. Musachio?
There were no committee meetings in December, so there are no, um, committee meeting notes to be looked at. Uh, we will now go for the public comment before we go into a closed session. So, uh, I will now commence the public comment portion of the agenda. Virtual participants, if you would like to state your comment, please click on the raise hand icon, icon on your screen and you will be called upon. You can also type a comment into the question box on your screen as well. When called upon, please address the virtual room by stating your first and last name, address, and your comment. Please know that questions asked during this time may not be responded to, but instead we will make arrangements to follow up with you after the meeting to address your question. Uh, do we have folks in the room who signed up? Ms. Moore?
We do. Uh, we actually have four in person today, uh, starting with Mr. Ray Brown White.
Good morning. Uh, first of all, I wanted to...
Again, Dave.
Oh, Ray Brown White. I live thirty-one, forty-nine E Kimball Terrace, and it's a wonderful, uh, beautiful, uh, radiant neighborhood, Ranger Village. Uh, I want to first of all, say good morning to everybody. And the pub has the way I look, I'm going to aquatic therapy after this session. So I, my comment today is I want to... So my comment today is, I want to do two things. I want to acknowledge when they are good people and their good things that the board needs to know. We had a, I thought we had pictures. We sent some pictures to Jennifer for Christmas. Hopefully next week you'll get to see them on the screen. We had lunch with the Santas. The first time in almost two years of the kids, the neighbors got out to meet the new residents and to meet new kids. NRHA really put a big bow on our Christmas because Steve Morales and Mrs. Shaw and some Thomas and some other people, Donna Kane, Mr. Clark was there. Mr. Jackson, thank you for the team. Christmas is a big thing for me, been a big thing for all of our family, for all the families to buy the birthday gift giving. And the agency stepped up. I don't know if some of you are Commissioners, it seems in the pictures, we had over a hundred kids in Grandy. The staff came and participated. I think we forgot about COVID, but we participated in giving and sharing the word of the meaning of Christmas. And that means a lot to residents. Kids, I would have run them here, but they say y'all have PS5s or that kind of games. Now we're five rivers, so let's just tell them the way. They were very happy about it. You saw the kids outside running their bikes and all the toys they got, and it's really a wonderful gesture. Actually, I had some visitors, the Mayor of Norfolk came and spoke. He said, if you send your letter, because that's something he will actually see on forward in the city of doing stuff in the community, that the staff was out. He's calling his roads, he's from Donna State, he's still there. Mr. Clark came and Steve came up and it was really a nice thing. So boy, I'm really, we have some hard things going on in the community. And in NRHA, we do have some good things, but we need to honor the good things as well talk about the unnecessary fortunes we have in the agency. I want to thank you for that. And the second point is, I talked to Pastor Jeffrey Gunn, Dr. Jeffrey Gunn. And I want to get to use Jackson first. They're having a group of people, I think it's eleven hands. They're certified by the Department of Health, a void, and they want to go out, hopefully, which you're talking about, change some rules and policies. That we have a quote, that we can't tell who residents, get people names out, but they're having a group of nurses, certified nurses, that want to come out and give people their shots at home, they have to leave at home. I think that's a wonderful idea. We have started already, five people that come into Ranger today. They're giving, the nurses are coming out and, you know, going to homes and ask who needs the shot, for the coronavirus shot, and giving them booster shots, so they don't have to leave at home. So hopefully, we can adopt that to hopefully to every resident in public housing or in NRHA property can get that service. And we got to also open the rules just to make sure the residents can get the service and people know who where. And we actually have some of our people in our office in Grandy Village is going to walk nurses to the house and make sure it was the right house, it's the right person for them. So the residents can be comfortable and the agency can come for going to their home. So that, hopefully, we can talk about that. I think that'll be a good start to getting the residents, because in Grandy Village, ninety percent of the residents, the seniors are both vaccinated and probably about fifty, seventy percent of the residents are fully vaccinated. So hopefully that works, you know, and talking to them. So I would love to hand them over or we can have a meeting and make sure we need to stop all the properties we need to get to. And thank you all so much for Christmas. It was really, it was a lesson for the staff even come out to do what they did. I don't know who started, where it started, left that the legacy. The agency doing every, it was really nice touch, ours, the community, and some other groups got it as well. That's something for you all to know, that's something that you all, and I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, our second in-person speaker today is Mr. Vincent Hodges.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Vincent Hodges, sixty-two Riley Avenue, apartment number four, Norfolk, Virginia, two-three-five-zero-seven. I'm a member of the Kent neighborhood. As long as we're talking about boards and commissions and ways to be effective, now that some stuff that I've been doing in the political arena has passed, I'd like to say that there is prime opportunity for folks to be involved with Mr. Diller's departure. I suggest that in filling that seat, the residents are not only notified, but participate in a part of, very, very vocally, in a part of whomever is appointed to this seat, part of what is perceived at the doors of neighborhoods, not only Grandy Village with respect to Raytron, but in Tidewater Gardens, in Terrace, Calver Square, Dig, Oakleaf, right? Is that this is an area of high-handed leadership. It's unacceptable that the NRHA is not immersed in places that they should be and serve Mr. Albert with respect, sir. We are all leadership. All of us in this room know and have known about what's going on in these neighborhoods for a long time, and we are all accountable to it. Mr. Jackson, I cannot envy you and your position to being the frontman and spearman on that, and I say man is a gender-inclusive term, I'm a military person. But there is an accountability to be passed along to the Board and to us as citizens and constituents in advocating for the ethical treatment of these people who live in these neighborhoods. That is a social work perspective, that is not a political perspective. The highest level of service, these are comments that have come as I raised my hand, and I apologize for the interruption.
No, again.
Disruptive, but I'm new to this Board and the proceedings here. So I'll make sure that in the future, I'm sure that public comments or these things come at the end, and I won't be disruptive. But I will make sure that I try to take time to take notes to address things that are set. Highest level of customer service, why? Because these are human beings that live here. We need to own it, right? Mr. Jackson, I want to applaud you. I did some time working as an organizer with Planned Parenthood, who has a checkered past in minority communities. Regarding their troubled past and their checkered past, they have a policy of admit and admonish. We are a victim of our past to the city, the legacy of how we've treated these citizens. We need to admit where we are wrong, where we have been wrong, all the way back to Yent, further, all the way back to the annexation in the Berkeley neighborhood and the intentional burning out of residents in that community. We need to admit these things and admonish them, and it will require us to enter spaces of fragility, where there will be hard feelings, but work will get done if we are honest with these constituents. Strong, again, I strongly encourage whomever is going to be placed in Mr. Diller's seat to have strong verifiable ties to this community. They do not want any more high-handed leadership. We and other community organizers, per your request, sir, will be taking your word into the street about this vacancy, and we will be advising the deadline for these applications is February eighth. We will be putting that into the streets. Please assist residents with advocating for themselves in this process. Thank you for letting us know, sir, about the NRHA meeting in these being broadcast live. Technology is an issue for the constituent base in which you are dealing. Some of these people don't even know how to text from their phone. So to expect them to come in and advocate for themselves via a website with spotty internet is unacceptable. The NRHA can do a better job by bringing this information to the doors of constituents. Okay, let's see. We don't know what happened to the December meeting. There are us that work in the communities that knock on doors, that advocate on behalf of you to say, hey, this is where boards and commissioners sit. We come to speak with you and meet you where you are in the administration and advocacy process. When we don't get word that meetings change in a fair, equitable, and timely manner, not only does the process from the NRHA look poorly for us trying to assist you as community advocates and advocating on their behalf, look poorly. Our reputation and our ability to come alongside and assist for the ethical treatment of these human beings is eroded by poor planning. It is unacceptable. Please, from now on, if meetings are going to be changed, they should be known in a timely manner. These residents deserve that. They are working two or three jobs. They have real barriers and real issues that must be admitted. Too quick ninety-degree pivots on times and mediums, it is not fair to them. Fairness and equitable treatment of these citizens should first. Social work perspective, not political. That line of communication was horrible, okay? This neglected these communities is violence. And as a social worker, I will advocate for these citizens in that way. If we keep information from them, we are deliberately mistreating them. It is unacceptable. I hear about the top five, right? And I'd like to hear the top five from every community that it falls under the NRHA, not just the top five or the Quad as a whole. These are different communities in different parts of the city, the needs are different. The needs of the citizens that remain in Tidewater Gardens, if the redevelopment continues, is different, obviously, than the needs of the Grandy Village, which I was in, as most recently is Tuesday evening. It's not the same, the needs are different. I believe in what we're talking about as far as community relation managers in each of the communities, I think that that's a fantastic idea, but we need to distill that down further. And we need to see if there's an opportunity to empower these citizens by using something that may be as simple as a sign and block captain. We have people that live right next to each other and due to violence, poverty, and other disenfranchising moves that have been taken on behalf of the city, will not talk to each other. They are separated by cement and a firewall. And they won't communicate each other because of mistrust that has been bred here in this process, not by you individually, just by this process. Block captain suggested, I'd love to talk with you about that. The Delta Crown variant is the most recent variant of the Delta virus. Right now, it is the best of both worlds, as I interrupted, and again, apologetically say so. It is more virulent than the Delta, than the Omicron variant, which means that people will get sick. It is less contagious than Omicron. So it is still out there and is still a threat. We have to reach these people with proper PPE in place, and we have to make sure that if we're forcing them to do things like double move, stuff like that, where they will be compromising their immunosafety measures, that we protect them. Going on Amazon and spending forty dollars on a bag of ninety-five masks might be easy for us, it is impossible for them. Asking them to pay for moves in advance, because some of them are still unfair about the process where they're being double moved out of Tidewater Gardens. Some of them can't afford that. They can't go get a signature on in advance, and they don't know the process to receive their money, let alone PPE. Delta Crown, sorry. It's just important in this, please, with respect to the Board, I don't mean to allow to talk too often, but please remember that the large constituency base here that we're talking about is a minority and economically developing population. There is statistical data from a social work perspective that shows that the effects of what's happening during the pandemic are affecting these communities at three times the rate. And we're talking about what was their pre-pandemic levels. Earth rates of black women, violence, poverty. We have to act fast and in the spirit of good faith. I heard about creative types and creating, you know, I think that in working with that, sir, I think that there's, Mr. Gresham was talking about creative types. I think that there's an opportunity to bridge that, but there needs to be some awareness. There's only a simple street that crosses the Neon District, which is a high-revenue drive for the city, right? And what's happening right next door with their neighbors? So those creative types can be put to work. Contractors, RFI, maintenance staff. I get it, work orders, ma'am. Too many, too many residents that we go to, week by week by week, say, I don't know what's happening. I put a trouble call for a bullet hole in my window, and I don't have a trouble call number, and I don't know when they're going to come out. They just say, yeah, we're going to get it fixed. I have many allies alongside that have come along with me in this process that have met one particular tenant who's had a bullet hole in their window for the better part of a year. Now, what I can tell you is that just in a regular inspection of those homes by maintenance personnel, it's just human decency, upkeep, maintenance, policing, somebody should fix it. It's not fit, and that's prevalent throughout these communities. They need a trouble call number. If they call into a maintenance personnel, okay, it's today's date, and you're the first person to call with a trouble call number, easy. These solutions that we're talking about here, simple solutions, sir, and the Board, respectfully, a retired sailor, we can, you can create an Excel spreadsheet and put ticklers on the blog. Hey, remind us in two weeks to call this person if nobody's followed up. There are solutions here. We don't want to provide an excellent level of customer service right now. Short term, let's provide a basic level of customer service. I implore the Board to do that, please. Because I have pictures on my phone of people living in mold right now, of people turning on their faucets and debris coming out of their space. Is it a broken, rotted out, rotted out, you know, dry rotted valve? Could be, these buildings are sixty years old, but are they supposed to know that? Not their responsibility, the tenants. This is where we come in and advocate for them.
Well, thank you very much for your passion. Your passion is clear, and I think you've hit on a number of things that Ron has talked about, and we will be engaging with folks to make sure that there is an understanding of what's happening.
And thank you very much, and I'm happy to leave you my information. Thank you, the Board.
Okay. Thank you.
Our next in-person speaker is Monet Johnson.
Morning. I'm up here with the same thing as always.
Can't hear you, and you need your address.
The same thing as always.
And the name, name and the address.
I'm up here with the same thing as always, maintenance discussed. I think that we are getting closer than we've ever been to being on the same page moving forward. I think that I agree with both of y'all, maintenance is a plus, but it also needs to be going towards being electronic. If right now, it looks like a really nice Google form that takes thirty seconds to set up, and people can submit their email address, their address, their name, and whatnot, that's something that can happen in the next couple of hours. That's not difficult. I think long-term, it should look something like the Norfolk Terrace app or something like that, where people get a receipt, because that's the problem. Call in, you say, hey, I have an issue. You call back, they're like, I never spoke to you, I don't even know who you are. I think that people need to get a receipt of like proof that they submitted a maintenance request, and then a timeframe, whether it be if it's an emergency of twenty-four hours, if it's not, seventy-two hours, if it's something we don't have in stock at the week. I think people should know how long they're going to be waiting, because that's the basic maintenance. And I think that if you're owning our wrong, right, in terms of maintenance, I think that looks like an apology letter to the residents. Like, hey, not only are we trying to fix it, but we know we messed up, and you have it in writing. We're moving forward in like a more progressive way. And then I'm always here person, but I'm also always here to meet with any of you all if you want to talk with all of us, if you look like an actual practice and how we can move forward, now that we can have some more transparent conversations. And then this is said in city council, but also here, I don't know if it's the y'all, the city council thing in terms of that, the same call advisory council, you need a resident on there. And they kind of really respect the work that you do, but sometimes being TMC and being just like a resident, resident are not the same thing, and we need both of those things on that board to make it work. Because sometimes people aren't going to want to tell, you know, Raytron their business, because I live here, you know, and I don't want people in my business, but I also want to advocate on behalf of the residents. So that's everything I have. I hope y'all enjoy the interesting weekend. Have a nice night.
Thank you.
Okay, our final in-person speaker, before we get this person, can you send a prompt for the online folks, so we can just go and queue up?
Do that again, ma'am?
Mm-hmm. Just to queue up any more online speakers, as we have our last in-person speaking.
Sure. Virtual participants, if you would like to state your comment, please click the raise hand icon on your screen, and you will be called upon. You can also type a comment into the question box on your screen as well. Again, when called upon, please address the virtual room by stating your first, last name, address, and your comment. Please know that questions asked during this time may not be responded to, but instead we will make arrangements to follow up with you after the meeting to address your questions.
Thank you. And our last in-person speaker, Mr. Vinny Kestrel.
I didn't get the name.
Again, the name and the address, please.
Vinny Kestrel, thirteen forty-two Respor Ave. First up here. What was my last?
Yeah, we can't hear you. Again, the acoustics in the room, aren't they great? So if you could speak louder, just to make sure we have. louder just to make sure we get, we get everything.
Um, first time here, I'm your last time here. Wanted to hear for certain reason, because the unfair, uh, unfair treatment of tenants that's going on on y'all property. Y'all kinda know what's been going on. Y'all know the system is broken. Y'all know what's going on. Y'all deliberately ignore people. Donna Mills, she doesn't do her job. There's a lot of stuff going on that we know is going on. It shouldn't have to take a woman getting shot in the face, but maintenance fixes the issues and problems. Y'all hitting her up, hey, y'all contact her, hey, y'all contact her, et cetera, et cetera. None of that would never have happened the way we teach and didn't interview her for her getting shot in the face. And then it's, oh, y'all need to make this problem. We've been, we've been talking about these problems. We've been submitting photos. Y'all know what's going on. The, the people that y'all hire for the maintenance issues can't even fix maintenance issues. They can't even like change a light bulb. Whatever problem that they have, they say, oh, gotta, um, contact the contractor. So what's the point of having maintenance there if nobody knows what they're doing? See, I need to go back to the drawing board with that, hiring the people that's actually gonna do the job. And then if there's a job that they can't do and it's too big for them to do, then you get the contractor then. They're charging people for trash on the property. It's horrible. Y'all charging people for, for lights, uh, light bulbs and, uh, screen fix, telling people to come out their pockets for things that y'all supposed to replace with your own. I've been following y'all for about two years. I kinda know everybody's faces in here and names and everybody that's on the call, but I just wanted to do my research just in case. I got about like six months, maybe seven months worth of material evidence of, uh, intentional neglect and a lot of corruption going on. So it's not like we don't see what y'all doing. We see what y'all doing and we wanted to, or we will, take our action if it's necessary. Nobody wants to do that. I want the people to get their fair share and get treated with some dignity. I like they're not human beings just because they live on y'all property, which is a, uh, below the status quo. Mr. Jackson, uh, presented a, a six-month plan about what needs to be said and what needs to be done. You don't need six months for that. Y'all know what's going on. Get it rolling like right now. Get it rolling this week. You don't need no retreat to know what's going on. You just can go to the doors or ask anybody. You can ask Don, you can ask any, you can ask any, any manager that's in Palma Square, that's in Young's Park, that's in Diddy, et cetera, et cetera, what's going on. Y'all know what's going on. Y'all need to stop playing this game. People first, trash. People that y'all look for in these civic leagues, uh, uh, head people that y'all bridge at is trash. Everybody wanna kiss up and stay honest, but nobody wanna do the work. You got people that's, that's having vouchers that's not getting accepted elsewhere, uh, in other places. You got limits on the vouchers. You got people being displaced, being back in places that y'all kicked them out of. You got, you got, you got, of course, you got crime, you got police. You got, you got make, uh, you have certain people in certain offices overcharging people and they shouldn't be. It's receipts out here. It's, it's, it's a lot of, a lot of wild stuff going on. And I know y'all know half of what's going on. That's not saying nothing. Or maybe y'all think I can just get away with everything, but I'm just here to tell y'all that y'all need to tighten up and do what y'all supposed to do.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Moore, do we have anybody online?
We have no additional callers on the line and we checked the lobby and there is no one in the lobby.
All right, and I will close the public comment period. Thanks, folks, for speaking.
I did have, I, I did have one item I wanted to announce before we went into closed session.
Okay. All right, before we go into closed session, Mr. Jackson?
Yes, I was, uh, I, I just wanted to let the board know that I was invited to be a part of Chief Boone's, uh, press conference that he has set for tomorrow at twelve-thirty at the, uh, Police Administration Building. There's gonna be, uh, his, uh, uh, community partners, as well as the alcohol, tobacco, and firearms will be there as well. And they'll be talking, uh, talking about guns, youth violence, and straw gun purchases. And that's, again, that's tomorrow. It's a press conference tomorrow with the, with the NPD's community partners. It's twelve-thirty tomorrow at the Police Administration Building.
Okay, thank you. We will now take a look at going into closed session, please.
Do you have the resolution that you left me to read?
Do I have it?
No, I'm always.
I don't, I like.
Let me see, I'm sure there's. Forty-one?
Do you have the resolution that you needed? Close session resolution.
Stage forty.
Stage forty?
Mm-hmm.
Can I read it from your screen?
Oh, yes.
I'll read it for you if you'd like.
Oh, he didn't get it.
Okay. Yeah. Resolution convening a closed session, January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Be it resolved that the authority will convene in a closed meeting pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended, the Act, to discuss the following matters, which are specifically exempted from public disclosure by the code section referred to below. Personnel matters involving the assignment, promotion, appointment, demotion, performance, salaries, or resignation of employees of the authority as authorized by section two-point-two dash thirty-seven eleven A one of the Act. And consultation with the authority's legal counsel regarding probable or actual litigation requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel as authorized by section two-point-two dash thirty-seven eleven A seven of the Act. Now have a motion, please. Mr. Albert?
Aye.
Mr. Gresham?
Aye.
Ms. Harrington?
Aye.
Mr. Benassi?
Aye.
Ms. Puria?
Aye.
Mr. Musachi?
Aye.
All right, with that, we normally take about five minutes. Reminding you not to discuss any business whatsoever, uh, so we'll reconvene shortly.
Kembe Nasi.
Good morning, this is Jafina calling you on a separate line so that... Please mute yourself. On the computer. Thank you.
Okay, resolution convening, I'm sorry, resolution certifying a closed meeting. We lost Ken Benassi. Should I call him back?
Yes.
Did the line drop? Are you back?
Yes.
Okay. Whereas the authority has convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2 dash 3712c of the 1950 Code of Virginia as amended requires a certification by this authority that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore upon motion duly made and seconded it is resolved that the authority hereby certifies that to the best of each commissioner's knowledge, number one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were heard, discussed or considered in the closed meetings, and number two, only such public business matters that were identified in the motion convened in the closed meetings were heard, discussed or considered by the authority. May I have a motion, please?
Agreed.
That's it. Mr. Gresham?
Aye.
Ms. Arrington?
Aye.
Mr. Benassi?
Aye.
Ms. Torrier?
Aye.
Mr. Mitratio?
Aye.
Do we have further comments?
This has been fun.
The three of us have been fun, but it hasn't been real fun. And I will call the January meeting to a close. Thank you everyone.